Good evening, everyone. This is the September seventeenth Planning Board Meeting, Township of Franklin, 7:00 PM. Please rise for the flag. Salute.
I want to be a citizen of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. To you, Chris, for the open public meeting statement, please.
Notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act in the annual notice of meetings. A copy was posted on the township website, and notice of this meeting was sent to the Sentinel, and a copy was posted at the Franklin Township Municipal Building.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Malady.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Kahoot.
Here.
Mr. Constantine. Mr. Doyle. Mr. Ranson. Mr. Swede.
I'm here.
Mr. Clark. Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Travellion.
Here.
Chairman Pash.
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to memorizing the resolutions, PB 2401, Ryan Morris. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve PB 2401, Morris.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Who's seconded?
Me.
Jimmy.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine. Oh, sorry. Mayor Bruno.
Here. Yes.
Mr. Travellion.
Yes.
Chairman Pash.
Yes. And our second one, PB 2402, Generation Enterprise.
Motion to approve PB 2402, Generation Enterprise.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Travellion.
Yes.
Chairman Pash.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to reports, communications, and presentations. First off, Chris, is there any reports or communications?
No, there's not.
Okay, then let's move on to the 2024 Master Plan Reexamination Report. This evening, Chris is on a plane to Texas for a wedding, and he sent Richard from the firm to fill in this evening. So I guess, do we want to start with the highlights of the plan? And or you want Kate to go first, or on why we're doing this? And then do you want to pick up on the important talking pieces within the plan?
Chair, I was going to ask you, I'm going to swear him in just because he's not our regular planner, and our regular planner and engineer are sworn in at the beginning of the year.
Yep.
Could you please raise your right hand? Can you say your name?
Richard.
Richard. I see.
That's a repeat.
It's a repeat. Mr. Richard, if you can swear from the testimony you're about to give us under pen, no seal, Richard.
I do.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe Richard was going to set forth just a brief overview of the plan, and then go through that one.
Okay.
Right, so, thank you again. I just wanted to go through the reexam report a little bit. So generally, the MLUL, municipal land use law, specifies that the governing body, at least every ten years, will provide a general reexamination of its master plan and development regulations by the planning board, which shall then prepare and adopt by resolution a report on findings of such reexamination. And the last reexamination done was in 2013. So this 2023 report, 2024 report, which the subcommittee and members of, some members of the board worked on and our office is to reexamine the 2013 reexamination report. So I'll just generally go through a little bit highlights. There were a few issues identified in the 2013 master plan reexam, page eight of the document, turn to page eight, maybe. So briefly go through a couple of these items. And by law, we, the reexam is supposed to identify any problems that were identified in the previous reexam, and then the extent to which they have either been reduced or increased. So if you look at the land use element, the item one A, we are talking about the existing zoning previously did not promote the retention of the rural character that is cherished by Franklin residents. And this has been addressed by the 2007 Township Zoning Code. B, looking at manufacturing, industrial uses in particular tend to be scattered throughout the community near residential development or residentially zoned land. This also has been addressed in 2007 by township adopted zoning ordinance amendments, which consolidated manufacturing and industrial districts to amend the permitted uses in each district. The item C, which had to do more with protecting existing landmarks in Frankville and encouraging the preservation of the remaining village Malaga, I think they had mentioned, the previous reexam had mentioned that we prepare some surveys for the two villages to identify the differences between the two villages, but no surveys have been conducted yet. So this is an item that we highlighted. I probably will need to move forward with at some point. Item D, court amendments having to do with landscape and buffer standards. This has been addressed in that zoning amendment in 2007 that included new design standards and also consolidated higher commercial district that was likely intended to address these issues. Item E, looking at the zoning scheme, which was not consistent with principles of smart growth. This was also being addressed by the 2007 zoning amendments, which created new standards for cluster development and environmental protections in the RA district. This is the housing element and fair share plan. We noted that this has also been addressed as the planning board has recently adopted a new housing plan that implements terms and conditions of the 2021 settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center. And this has been approved by the court adequately to address the township's low and moderate income housing needs. And the open space plan, I think the recommendation was to have a lot more open space as the demand exceeded the available space that was in the township. This was addressed by township adopted farmland preservation plan in 2022. Taking a look at the watershed-based stormwater management planning, the concerns were with increased impacts associated with non-point source pollution and stormwater runoff in the township. And I think a stormwater management plan was adopted in 2007, which catered to this item. On page 11, we have assumptions, goals, and objectives of the 2013 reexamination report. I think the subcommittee found that a lot of the goals were valid, but just a few updates to those assumptions to pretend with me to... Then we would need to page 36 of the document where we have planning recommendations. A lot of these assumptions and goals and objectives from the 2010-13 reexam have been consolidated and itemized here from pages 36 to 39. And I believe a lot of you are privy to this document and probably have gone through all these. A lot of them remain valid, just with a few minor tweaks to that. So you want to jump into planning recommendations in the middle of the matter. Page 40 of the document. So these are a list of planning recommendations that the subcommittee came up with. A new open space and recreation plan element for the master plan. A new environmental resource inventory to identify environmental resources in the township that should be prepared. Historic preservation plan elements should be prepared. We need to work to implement the recommendations of the recently adopted farmland preservation plan. We encourage developers of major projects to seek conceptual review hearings with the planning board or the township staff to solicit feedback prior to formal submission of applications. We need to continue to recognize the need and obligation to provide fair share of low and moderate income housing throughout the township. Moving on to ordinance recommendations, there were a couple of ordinance recommendations, and I'm going to briefly go through these. And I'm sure at the end, there'll be probably a few questions that we can address. Item eight, this is looking at more minor subdivisions and construction of new homes on existing lots that are undersized. I think that the subcommittee is recommending standards for developing these homes on pre-existing legally established undersized lots. And we highlighted some regulations for those. They also recommend standards for new lots that are created by subdivision. And these should have a maximum lot coverage of 15%. Item nine, this has to do with reasonable accommodation of warehouse development while protecting the rural character of the community. So the recommendation was to have these set up as conditional users. So you have a list of conditional use standards on page 42, which will address any sex developments coming into the township. So we have a list of them. The property must be located within a half mile of the entrance or exit of an interchange of a limited access highway. There should be no access from local roads. The property must have a direct frontage on a state or county highway. It has to be located a minimum of 1,000 feet from any school or residence measured from building to building. A minimum lot area should be 10 acres. Building setback and buffering requirements should be established. And we have recommended some setbacks and buffer requirements for same permitted in previous coverage shall be 40%. Maximum permitted height 45. And then we have additional requirements for bulk design, bulk design standards, landscaping buffers to include six to eight foot in height unless vegetation is sufficient to provide visual screening, provisions for renewable energy. Entrance driveways should provide sufficient space for carrying of trucks. Auto parking demands to reflect the type of warehouse. We propose sound wall barriers within buildings and out. So we have item 10. We're looking at permitted uses within the highway commercial zone district. I think the committee realized that there were a lot of some historically residential uses along these commercial zoning districts. So I think the recommendation is to recognize these uses and permit them to remain as legally permitted users. Item 11, we're looking at properties that have frontage on two major thoroughfares, the Sea Drive or Harden Highway, that are zoned in the RA residential agricultural district. And the township should consider rezoning these parcels to a commercial district in order to have uniform commercial zoning along the highway frontages. And we have some map, proposed map changes that reflect item 11. So we're looking at page 44. The first item, A, that's south of Harden Way between Gosmon Avenue and Lake Road, block 5502, lots 12, 14, 15, 01, 16, 17, 18, to be rezoned to highway commercial along Harden and Harden Way. B, we have properties east of the Sea Drive along the Sea to have highway commercial uses instead of RA along that section. Page 45, same, looking at residential agricultural properties that are but highway commercial and interchange commercial uses and trying to make them consistent along those highways. Page 46. Item 12 has to do with within areas of the interchange commercial districts, trying to have zoning that new communities on smaller, the township will consider vacating right-of-way and vacating paper streets to consolidate parcels and create more buildable tracks along highway frontages. Item 13, we're looking at cannabis businesses. The township has already opted to permit classes one to four, but they were not explicitly stated in the ordinance. So it is recommended that they be classified as conditionally permitted users and only in industrial districts located at least 1,000 feet from schools and adequate buffering provided from adjacent users. Item 14 has to do with accessory structures, in particular, private garages. Definition for accessory structures, private garages. I think the subcommittee found out that because of that 1,200 square feet specification, it required many relatively minor applications for like pole bunks and residential properties. So the definition of a private garage, consider amending that definition of a private garage. And on page 47, I think they highlighted the proposal is to have it based on a certain size, on a sliding scale, based on the size of land that you have. So for properties less than half an acre, could be 1,200 square foot maximum accessory structure permitted. But then as you go up, you know, half to one acre, it could be 1,500. One acre to two acres could be 2,000 square foot. So we don't have too many variances coming back to the board. Item 16, look that requires setbacks for accessory structures. And this is also, the recommendation here is to have a sliding scale based on the size of the property. Item 17 has to do with reducing minimum requirements for accessory solar energy systems. Solar energy systems should be subject to the same setback and buffering requirement of other permitted accessory structures. Item 18, township should consider addressing battery charge storage systems in the land development regulations. At currently as it stands, it's silent on that. So I think the recommendation is to at least have some regulations in there for that. Item 19, storage is currently not listed as permitted accessory users in the business district. So the recommendation is to at least have accessory storage to be permitted in the business district, provided that it's within an enclosed structure. Item 20, consider revising the definitions of major and minor development, major and minor subdivisions. So the recommendation is to currently look at the definitions for major and minor subdivisions. And if you move to item 21, I think currently what it has, what the ordinance states is that subdivisions that result in four or fewer lots is considered minor. The proposal or recommendation is to have from four to three, so that above three triggers a major subdivision review. Item 22, subdivision requirements for minor development should be revised so that formal plans are not required for development that have less than 400 square foot of disturbance. Item 23, fences within a side yard on residential properties should be permitted to have a maximum height of six foot rather than four feet, treating them the same as the rear yard rather than a front yard. Item 24, motorarium on road openings within five years after roads are repaved, where roads have been recently repaved, efforts to be made to use methods as directional boring to work under the pavement where feasible in order to protect the asphalt. This was also strongly recommended by the township engineer. Item 25, looking at definitions in the land development regulation for corner lots. Clarify where front yards or side yards exist for corner lots, two lots, or irregularly shaped lots. Item 26, taking a look at the code requirement for prohibition of creating lots where depth of the lot exceeds two and a half times the width. I think the recommendation here is to consider updating the language there and that when a new lot satisfies a minimum lot area, the width and the depth requirement for the particular zoning district, it may not be necessary to further limit the lot's depth. Item 27 talks about the buffer requirements, additional buffer requirements between residential uses and non-residential uses. Page 50, item 28, looking at additional landscape requirements for new subdivision and site plans. 29, architectural design standards or guidelines to be developed for non-residential development and multifamily development. 30, consider revising stormwater management regulations to require stricter controls on stormwater runoff in environmentally sensitive areas. So we can move on to redevelopment recommendations on page 51. The master plan should reflect the current redevelopment plan for Meredith Farms property that's adjacent to Townston Airport on Harden Highway. Item 32, the property is located between South Wall Street and 455 on the border with Clayton Township. I think was, believe was designated in need of redevelopment in 2009, but no redevelopment of the site has occurred. So the board needs to revisit that. Item 33, township committee should only target areas for redevelopment that have a realistic potential to be redeveloped and are generally free of environmental constraints such as wetlands. And then we have recommendations for electric vehicle infrastructure, generally highlighting where the township could add some electric vehicle supply service equipment, and also including some of these guidelines within commercial areas within the township. So I think generally, these are the contents of the reexam report that has been worked on by the subcommittee and our office. And I think now, I think I don't know if you have anything to add to that or we can kind of open it up for discussions.
Chair, if you or the board has any questions, you can ask them now or we can open up for public hearing or...
Let's have the input from the public first. This way, we can take that piece and tie that together. Before I call for a motion to open to the public for comment at this time, I would like to recognize the subcommittee who worked on this master plan review. Suzanne McCarthy was the chairwoman, who did an excellent job. Sarah Thurston as well, Ralph, myself, Jim Kelly, Steve Ranson, and Jason Brandt. I personally want to thank each one of yous for the time and effort you placed into this. It was a lot bigger project than I thought, and you did an excellent job of moving this thing forward. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to open to the public and the committee people I just named. If you have comments, we'll take those comments as well at this point. Is there a motion to open the public?
We'll make that motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we're open to public comment on the master plan review.
Do I need to identify myself?
No.
No, we know who you are, Suzanne. Everybody else, yes, you know.
Suzanne, I just have a question about one of the provisions that I don't think, I think I missed a page from those copies. That you mentioned about vacating streets. Go back to that one, and just tell me. Because I don't remember discussing it.
Okay.
And when you find it, please provide the page number so we can refer to it.
Sure.
That's page 46.
26?
46.
46, sorry.
Recommendation 12. Within areas of the interchange commercial districts, lands are made up of numerous undersized parcels, and they are usually laid out in small block grid patterns separated by township right-of-way that are currently undeveloped. So making these lands a patch of smaller properties either than having them separated by paper streets and trying to improve the paper streets to consolidate some of these smaller lots is the recommendation.
I don't think we discussed that.
I can't remember.
You didn't?
Yeah. Because I think it had to do with some of the area along where the redevelopment zones were being considered. And some of the, you know, there was a lot of paper streets back there.
Right, on both sides. But some of them are next to Malaga Lake on one side, and on the other side. I don't think that was part of the original setup. And on the other side, on the west side, south side, I guess. There's still much paper streets.
Yes.
I believe there's paper streets all throughout all the land around there.
Yeah. There's that provision that I just can't remember talking about. Because we talked about it, it's kind of a standpoint of warehouses. Okay, I don't see any objection to that, just... One minute, I don't think we went into very far. Otherwise, everything sounds like what we've been... Otherwise, everything sounds like what we've been preaching. Fortunately, I hope the board agrees to it.
Thank you Suzanne. Anyone else?
I think I can.
You're on a need Jason. Yeah, school doors.
What happened to yours?
The wheels fall off.
I can make that a little more obvious. Good evening, uh Jason Brandt. Uh thank you, Mr. Patsch for uh for recognizing uh the committee and the work you put into this uh this report. Um I think with the exception of one meeting, I was in attendance at all meetings. Um I believe one meeting had did come uh late since we had the conflict. Um the reason I bring that up has become evident, uh I don't want to uh further comment. Um I only have one, one item I wanted to address this evening. Um at the onset of hearing, uh Richards, uh guys with the report and now the comments from Suzanne, I have two other quick ones I want to address. If you could draw your attention to ordinance recommendation number eight. Um it talks about establishing um some minimum standard for, for legal rights for these lots. I know we discussed this pretty thoroughly and it was a broad uh agreement uh on all these items. One item I don't see here listed is a minimum lot frontage requirement. Um I just don't believe we discussed establishing uh a minimum. I, I don't believe there should be a minimum, but I believe that to avoid confusion, perhaps we should add that into the, the standards where, where it's listed in minimum lot area, minimum front yard, so, so on and so forth. So just so, you know, municipal officials or municipal exchanges that they don't say, oh, well, you meet these requirements, however, you do not meet some arbitrary frontage requirement. Uh as you guys all know, we have to put it in slide lots with the township and uh this is meant to address some other issues. I'm not sure if I'm making myself clear.
It's a very good catch here.
We did not.
So I think, I, I mean, I don't know if it would be appropriate to put no minimum frontage requirement, but I would, I would say highly reduce the frontage requirement to, to catch those slide lots, perhaps, you know, twenty-three, twenty-five feet or more in length.
I think the catch here is they're pre-existing legally established undersized lots. So the frontage is already noted by the lot.
No, I, I completely agree with you, but I can see going to the zoning officer and the zoning officer saying, well, it says no minimum lot area. Here's the front yard setback, here's the side yard setback, here's the rear yard setback. It doesn't address frontage, so.
Yeah, but that means, but Jason, that means that the zoning officer doesn't have a pre-legal document. Because it's pretty clear if you say existing.
No, no, is what I'm saying, uh.
Yeah, but, but to Ralph's point, that's a pretty clear definition of what that, what that lot size should be.
Well, yeah.
If it's, if it's an established, if it's an established uh lot size, then it's, it's in all the records. It's in all the property records of what that lot size is.
I, I don't disagree with you, however, in dealing with municipal officials.
You want to further clarify?
You just want to clarify your interpretation. What they interpret as a lot of.
Kate, that would be up to you on how to define that, how to write that.
I mean, I think it would be, I mean, actually, this would go to the, to the township committee. So we could, we could make the recommendation that there would be um some language in there that defines what the, the lot frontage would be. Obviously, these are already pre-existing lots.
They're pre-existing, so.
But they would just, so we would recommend some language in there that, that.
Recognizes, pardon.
Recognize that they're established lots.
Without attaching a number to it because it's pre-existing.
Right, so that that way the um ordinance are, you know, that it's clear in that.
Yeah, it makes sense when the light is pre, it's pre-existing, I proceed that thing as you move forward. Um that was the first comment. The second comment was regarding um the paper streets and I don't, I can get back off memory and uh quote any specific conversations we had by the paper street, if you look one that had talked about for quite some time being addressed by um the subcommittee and I know that we did talk about it in, in certain respects. So the only thing I would add to that is that I think you identified looking at this paper streets in the interchange commercial, I mean, maybe it's appropriate to look at this paper streets in the entirety of the township, uh because they do affect other areas aside from the interchange commercial, but that's just my personal comment, something I want to consider. And the last question, or last comment I had, um and this goes back to my prior comment, was I believe this, this item was discussed in a portion of the meetings that I was in attendance at and I tried to get some further clarification um after that and it seemed it was not, not a broad consensus as to what the actual recommendation was. Um and that item is item twenty-one. Uh I know we discussed item twenty with the definitions for other, item twenty-one. There's long been, you know, the ambiguity in the definitions for minors, up to the front of township and it's been interpreted possibly whole differently. Um and I believe that definition should be cleaned up. However, I don't think I'm in favor and uh wouldn't be my recommendation to actually reduce the number of lots um that would trigger a major subdivision versus a minor subdivision. Um all of these items, you know, within the, within the report are items that we've uh, yourself and the planning board, members of the zoning board that identified problematic areas that we're trying to uh correct, uh move forward. Now, I don't know where that recommendation came from. I don't recall there ever being an issue, number of lots um requiring major minor subdivision, so on and so forth. Um so in that respect, I'm, I'm looking for a little bit further clarity and essentially I'd like to see it remain as it is. You know, some might say that I'm a developer and I thought I want this. I mean, my developer side says I'd like to see that moved to five or six lots on miners. So I think four is a, a, a reasonable consensus. I know, you know, there's other, other councils that I work in, City of Island Six, there's other areas that are four, but moving down to a three lot uh requirement, especially in this value, frankly, that's quite a few large parcels, I think it's just a little bit of a reach, so I just wanted to keep that.
Can I think, piggyback on that a little bit? Because I really believe that most of the people coming from the board or township residents, that they get more difficult or more, you know, less cost effective to do a minor subdivision or, you know, less people that have been, you know, there's not a lot of development coming in from the major subdivision or minor subdivision. So I think that we've heard that township residents, I think it changes.
I agree, yeah, I agree, definitely.
And I do appreciate everybody's mind, that's something that I, you know, one, one that I, I have an issue with.
So that was my only comment. Uh I don't know if you have any questions for me or uh why to be that, but I'll be here for the rest of the meeting.
The only question I have for you there, Jason, is when is the uh school board consolidation meeting?
Um the study for the school board consolidation, if you really want to know.
I'm just getting you on the record.
Okay, is um, the study's been released and is available for public, uh public consumption. Um I believe there's been a uh public hearing scheduled for September, uh the thirtieth. Um I want to say it's seven o'clock at uh Delta Regional High School to uh give an opportunity for those individuals to actually prepare the study and present that to the community. Um after that, I mean, there's going to be the timeline of presenting, but uh my understanding after that will get back to the individual boards uh for further discussion. Uh you know, pending the outcome of that meeting as to whether or not uh the individual boards let's uh proceed with, you know, putting something into quite a public question after the meeting in order of them to build on it. Uh I believe I'll see you and the rest of the board at the meeting on the thirtieth.
Yep.
Obviously, a lot of questions.
No, that's good. Thank you. And that was a loaded question. I wanted to get that out there. And I also want to recognize you seeing on this committee representing the uh, these schools uh because that's, that's a whole piece of the uh master plan as well.
You had to say something, so I got to make one more comment. My other comments were, were, you know, directed personally at the representative of the school.
Uh, no, I, I understand.
There is um one portion of this, I even touched on it, was spoken about, which was the cannabis. And the recommendations in this report are pretty clear as to what the position of the subcommittee was and I believe the position of the township theory will be. Is if we want to prohibit these cannabis uses in any areas that are not appropriate for and the only areas that we feel have been deemed appropriate with conditions are those areas that are industrial or something within the township. So I know there's been a lot of applications or some conversations about it, but this is in the record now that that's how the subcommittee feels. And I assume the township committee will adopt uh this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
That is representative station up from school.
There you go. Got it. Anyone else?
Motion to close, public portion.
Move, move in second all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye.
So I have some, yeah, just some general questions. Um so I'll, I'll ask this to you, Joe, since you have history on the township committee. So there's thirty-six recommendations here. Do you remember uh the last review, how many recommendations were made to the township committee?
I honestly don't. Suzanne, can you help me? I, I was, but I don't, I, I don't.
I'm just trying to get a feel. So now, so, so let's say the board, our planning board approves this document as presented and now moves to the township committee. What, what is the timeline and Jake, you know, you, I guess it's up to you and the rest of the members. How do you adopt these things and how do you implement them? How do you execute the recommendations? Do you rec, do you accept them? I mean, what's the process?
I, I believe that you.
Kate, you want to step up here?
So generally, I was going to say generally, once this goes to committee, um they, I mean, they don't have an exact timeline to implement everything, although they, they would have. Um obviously now this is their, this would be their outline, this would be their, their plan, their guide to implement these ordinances, these changes. So once it's reviewed by the solicitor, um and, you know, they can go through each recommendation and kind of just see, they would have, there isn't really a set timeline to adopt or formalize these changes. They don't necessarily have to comply with every single change or adopt every single recommendation that's made. Uh these are just giving them, you know, the, the planning boards and the subcommittee that has done this work is giving them like kind of like a skeleton guide to, hey, we've reviewed this and these are the changes that we see would benefit, just based on the work that we're doing for the township. This is what we think would benefit. Um our planners reviewed it and it would just make everything better. And then from there, the, the township and committee has the ability to move as faster, you know, as fast as implementing the changes as they feel is appropriate.
I, I have a question. I'm sorry, Jim. I noticed reading through it, some of these things were recommended in the past and there was never any action taken on them. What, what happened with stuff like that?
That's why I want to know, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, if the, again, the township doesn't have to take action on it. I mean, um the recommendations are there. And obviously, uh the master plan is something that the township committee should look at um to implement. So if, um you know, for instance, uh the cannabis recommendations or the warehousing recommendations, um those conditional uses, that should be something, things like that should be looked at quickly um just because, you know, those or, those ordinances might want to be put into effect quicker than others. But there's really, so the ones that kind of just aren't taking action on, um there's really nothing. I mean, I guess they just lapse or they're just kind of, they're, they're there, but they're just, I mean, there's not, they're not going to be penalized for not doing anything.
These are, these are uh recommendations that we're making to the township committee. They have no obligation, they can accept every one of them or they can accept none of them whatsoever.
Right.
And, but, but I think what I'm trying to, I'm trying to stress here is that uh somebody should go through this list of prioritizing. I go through all thirty-six to say, go, what, what are the things that we really should get moving on right away? And I, the reason I say that is because if you remember, a couple of months ago, we had an application here and the, the applicant attorney said, you know what? We go by what the, what the ordinance is in place on the day of the application. So if some of these things are very important to township committee and the township residents, then they should be prioritized and acted on as fast as possible. And that's why I'm asking for the, what's the process?
So I think when the planner would go, so once this is, you know, if you choose to adopt it this evening, our planner could uh attend the meeting, um the township meeting, um and review this with township and council, uh township council committee, um and the solicitor and then go through those changes that would be most important or pertinent to, to put into effect sooner than later. Um and then that could be a way to look at it instead of kind of, um, I mean, you know, I think that would be most appropriate to handle it that way. Um it would give the, the township committee further, you know, like guidance to, you know, to kind of, because you guys are, you, you know, you're the ones who see what the problems are. You're the, you're the ones that have to act. Um and then, you know, kind of giving them like guidance to how the, how the, um, what's important and what's coming in front of the planning board.
You know, and I think that's a lot of common knowledge. The uh additional uh structure, uh, uh, where, excuse me, the pole barn ish, the pole barn issue that's out there, the count of issues out there, solar issues out there. So these things are occurring on a regular basis and to prioritize, there, there's your list of priorities. And I think it's common knowledge that they are uh the major issues that either planning or zoning are having problems with and let's fix it. The answer, and I don't think it's really, uh, you, you initially asked how many was the previous reports and I don't know what that number was, but thinking about it, that was ten years closer to the original master plan first. And secondly, today's issue, solar, cannabis, uh, well, the historic buildings have been an issue for a while, but they didn't exist back then, so that number, I think, is really irrelevant whether it's thirty-six.
No, no, I, all I'm saying is, you know, these are all recommendations. It doesn't say the township committee shall, it says it's recommended that the township committee consider, right? So then, to your point earlier, township committee doesn't have to do any of this.
Any of, yeah.
So, but you got to look, you got to go through this list and say, okay, what, what do I need to act on right away? And so, I, there should be some sort of timeline established, to me, anyway, that's my opinion. I think you probably should go through it, say, okay, of these thirty-six, what needs, what do I really got to get done quickly?
Okay, and to, and to simplify it, I will turn around and ask you to, because there's an individual sitting to my left, uh solar issue, uh cannabis issue.
Warehouse.
And uh, yeah, warehouse has been an issue and the uh pole barns on people's properties. So to me, there, there are four important pieces that the township should prioritize. So I, I turn now to the board and ask, what, what other ones out there do you think we should? So that uh, you know, it's, it's.
I think buffers are something.
The way cannabis, cannabis is written now.
Right.
They can't.
Right, yeah.
That's been proven, I think, three or four times already.
Already, at the zoning level, yeah.
To clean it up, I think that's great, but I mean, I, I think that's worked.
Yeah.
Right?
Is there anything else that you think we need to prioritize?
Um, well, I think buffers are important to try to, if we, if these, these strengthen buffer, existing buffers and they, they probably need to be adopted as well.
Okay. Um, let me flip back to my notes. On, Kate, on number eight, uh Jason mentioned the minimum frontage yard, front yard on a pre-existing, uh, I think the, what I'm hearing is that there should, there shouldn't be a number there, but.
Just some reference.
Some type of recognition that it's a pre, the frontage is pre-existing, uh, some verbiage there.
Right.
To take care of that piece of it.
And that's a minor revision that you can, and I'm sure that could still be added in there. Is that correct, Richard?
I, I guess, I'm trying to think this through. Under the warehousing piece of it, um, number nine, we get into um percentage of coverage and um maximum heights and stuff like that. With um F and G on page forty-two, stuff like that, is that, is that something that actually should be in an ordinance or is that something that should be worked out with the uh board and the engineers? Because I guess where I'm having a problem with it is that one, one project could come in on its own merit and um each project would be different. So by setting these standards here, is that, is this more of an engineering question or is this something that uh needs to be uh placed in an ordinance?
Well, typically you would have to have, I mean, for like limited building heights and for in previous coverage presented, you would want to have it set a hot board for all applications coming in.
I think they could apply for variance if needed.
Yeah, true.
That would be, that would be the way.
Yeah, there's, I just, I'm not trying, I guess I'm trying to prevent from.
Causing any additional.
Yeah. Variances, and that would be their out to it. I'm just, I'm wondering if it was more of an engineering question that the two, the parties' engineers work out, or if it should be in an ordinance. All right, I'm fine.
Okay.
Page 43, my next note, number 11, having, I have no problem with the 4047 access, but it talks about somewhere here, I believe the word was frontage, what happens when the company is putting its, they're building a warehouse, and they're putting their own road in, access road out to a major highway, versus having it fronting on the highway? Trying to find the words here.
Try it first one.
Yeah, number 11. I guess what I'm saying, what I'm thinking is that an applicant is putting a warehouse in on 47, and that they need to, they need to have the frontage on 47. What happens if they're building their own road back to the property? It's an extra.
According to our regs, it must have an aggressive entrance on 47 or 40.
Right, so that would be the road. All right. See, I'm thinking that it's, I'm thinking it's right up on the highway type of thing, and not back.
It must be on one of those highways.
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with that, yeah. I understand that piece of it. I'm just trying to figure out how they're, let's leave it be, because you can call that, what I'm calling an access road is their driveway.
Is that proper?
Yeah. All right. On page 48, item 21, Jason brought up the moving, leaving it as it is right now with a, a courthouse as being a minor, and this kicking the major in. What's the board's pleasure here? Or what's your board's thoughts on that?
There was a lot of discussion on that, Joe.
Yeah, there might have been one while you were on the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, the board was pretty solid on the three.
We wanted to make the language simpler to understand, though. I mean, how many you can create is the question, correct?
Yeah, but changing, it's going to go from, what is it, from?
From 4 to 3.
From 4 to 3.
Leave it the way, the way it is, who's working, leave it the way it is, I guess is the question.
So the fifth house made it the major?
Fifth house, fifth kicks a major in.
And this is where, that the fourth would be the major?
Yeah.
Was there a problem with the old?
No, no.
According to Jason, there hasn't been any issues.
No, we haven't had any issues with the way it is.
I'm just asking if something wasn't broken, why are we trying to fix it?
Exactly.
Sarah, do you have a comment? There was a lot of discussion on.
No, not any major subdivisions. Trying not to have more major subdivisions. If it becomes smaller, maybe it'll become smaller.
What's the definition of small?
Well, if you have four, if you have to do, if you want to do three, you should pay for it. I mean, if you're doing minor subdivisions, it's for your kids, it's usually one or two properties, that's what I always say, it's for your kids, which is fine. But if they want to start getting bigger, they should pay for it. That's my thought. Three lots is, or four lots is starting to get, which is four lots, three to four.
So you're saying if they go to four, takes it to a major subdivision, basically, they should pay for that, is what you're saying? Not that they can't do it, but they just have to pay for it?
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's how I think.
Is that how the, is that how the rest of the board felt, the committee at the time?
The committee did.
The committee felt to leave it status quo, or to change it?
To change it down to three.
Okay.
I'll stick up for Jason. He wasn't present at that meeting. We were, correct.
I was, I was in a hospital, but that's okay. I know. The, go ahead.
Do you want to do a straw vote of the committee right now? We're all here except for Steve Branson. We can do that. And then make my recommendation based on that to the planning board.
Yeah, I would just like to make a recommendation, whatever the committee, the majority of the committee made, I mean, that's who was picked to make decisions.
I hear you, and that's why I just made the recommendation. One, two, three, four, five, six members of the seven-person committee are here this evening, and if we can't come to a conclusion.
I mean, it was already recommended, and by, I mean, that's why it's in here, so. But I mean, so you're, so I'm sorry, Mr. Travellion, oh my God, I can't even speak this thing.
Ralph.
Ralph, thank you. And I thought my name was hard. My name is hard.
Mine's hard, too.
Your name is hard.
So you can certainly do that, because now you're discussing it, and you do have six, I guess, six of members that are present. But I mean, it was a recommendation that was made and found its way here, but to, I guess, since Jason is here, and Mr. Brant has made the comment, and you kind of just want to see what, where the committee's going, you can certainly do that, if you wanted to take, like.
There is a however, anti what I just said.
Okay, what was your however?
The language here on 21 says the township should consider. They can ignore it.
They certainly can.
Well, that's true. And to Sarah's point, the three trigger, here's my thought, is that we're 56 square miles. If I have 10 acre, you know, and actually, reality is my kids have built, if I have 10 acres, and I want to divide that up for my house and the kids, and three's kicking in sidewalks, curving, on and on, it's kicking in a major when a resident has 10 acres that he wants to divide up for his kid, and give lots to his kids to build their houses. And there's several places in the community where the parents and the kids are living on adjoining properties. And that's where I'm having a problem with it, is that.
For 10 acres, one, one, it's going to be an existing house, and the three kids, you can, that could use up to 10 acres.
Well, in your scenario, you can't do that. If you have kids, you don't pay according to them.
It's going to kick a master, a major in.
Can we waive the sidewalks anyway if it's appropriate?
It's going to kick a major in.
Do we want major developments all over, or do we want families to subdivide while still retaining the rural character?
And we do, and that's.
The only thing I want to say, when you go from three to four lots, it's not that big of a deal, you got one extra house, but in a cost-wise, if a resident, if a resident needs, they do have four children, they want to, the cost of that, to engineer that, and hire a council, and bring that to fruition, is triple or quadruple. It's.
See, and that's where I'm having a problem with it. I don't care about the developer. The developer can pay out the kazoo. I'm thinking about the residents that want to divide up the lots for their kids, and if we're kicking a major in, you know, it's a, that's a big cost to a township resident. I'm not out for the develop, sorry, Jason, but I'm not out for the developer. I'm looking at it as someone owning a nice hunk of land that they want to split it off for their kids to build houses on. And that's why I'm having a problem with it. To me, it's, what was on there worked, you know, but I'll go with what the, you know, majority of the group wants.
In their language, I can separate that versus having that versus developer coming in development, major.
Not legal.
Right.
No, because we're discriminating against one, you know, we're showing preference to one and not the other.
It's only a recommendation, doesn't have to be about. Yeah. So, I mean, just do it as it is.
Well, the mayor's hearing our comments this evening, but he's going to sit in the committee.
Mayor won't be that guy.
It's actually, as far as leaving status quo.
We'd make one motion for the whole plan, and then just put the notes and, you know, comments in as part of the motion.
We, as a board this evening, could strike number 21 on the vote. Yes?
True.
You could.
Yeah.
And then that would leave it status quo?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think I'd like what Rick, uh, what?
This is how.
Yeah, Mr. Travellion would.
Ralph, I tell you what.
Ralph.
Let me make a motion that we strike number 21 from the plan. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion, and I have a second to remove item number 21 from the plan completely. Roll call, please.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
No.
Mayor Bruno.
Uh, abstaining.
Mr. Travellion.
Yes.
Chairman Pesh.
Yes. Oh, you got you up?
It's three yes.
Because he was the motioner.
Three yes, one no, one abstained.
John, John?
You missed the motioner in the second.
Didn't John Malady vote?
I voted no.
Malady was yes.
Okay.
You didn't ask Mr. Kahoot.
Sorry, Mr. Kahoot.
Abstained by second.
Okay. Joe Swade didn't get a chance. Joe Swade made the second, but he wasn't called for the vote.
This takes the heat up.
My second to motion, yes.
Well, you still, you got a motion and a second, and then everybody is pulled, because even though you seconded it, you could turn around and vote no. This ain't my first meeting, champ. Okay, let's move on.
Yeah.
Okay, so 21.
21 has been striked from the plan. Yeah, strike, whatever you want.
I guess in 10 years from now, we really think it's a problem, we're revisiting. Never know.
I'm a little confused on number, page 51, item 31, the verbiage there is all correct, but why is it in here? What is the meeting?
Number 31.
31 on page 51 about, it's Meredith Farms. It states that it's currently a redevelopment, so we're not asking them to revisit that. Is that in the last redevelopment, or?
Right, it's just, I think it's just identifying.
Last master plan?
Right. I don't know that it's, I don't know if it was in the last master plan, so it's just saying generally that this should be included in this master plan, right, so it may have not been identified in the last.
Okay, so you're, it's basically stating the history of Meredith Farms, but what you're doing is you're recognizing it as a redevelopment zone, which would allow it to be warehousing, because even though it doesn't meet the criteria of warehousing, it's in, because it's a redevelopment zone, it can be.
Yeah, it's just that basically indicating that the master plan should reflect that it's a redevelopment, that that is a redevelopment plan in progress.
Okay, because it wasn't in the last one.
Because it wasn't in the last one.
Okay, I got it. I was, it's the history of it, but I was trying to figure out, why is it here?
Yeah, it's just, I think, just for identification purpose, and so that the board doesn't, I guess they don't forget that it's there.
This is, this was just something from the 2013 that was never touched upon.
It was, yeah, it was supposed to.
But like Jim Kelly said, we don't really, this doesn't have to be one of the ones that are.
It's basically telling the township to look at it.
Yeah, talking about the South Broad, 55, 32.
It's basically asking the township to revisit it. Okay. That's all my notes. Joe, you have anything?
No, I mean, we touched, we touched on it.
Okay. Ralph, anything we're missing?
I don't think so. So I'm guessing at this point, we would need a motion.
I want to make sure, I want to make sure, give each board member the opportunity to call for a motion. Do you have anything else?
I do not have anything to add.
Frank, any comment, any questions? Jimmy?
No, I, it's.
John, any comments, any questions before we call for a vote on this?
No.
You're good? Okay. I know, because you'd be conflicted, if I asked you, you'd be conflicted.
I'm not conflicted, I say, I appreciate the work that everyone has done to get it to this point. Thank you for your contribution. Is that okay?
You're not conflicted.
No, not you, I'm not thanking you.
I'm trying to keep you out of trouble, and that's, that's a big job. Okay, at this time, I'm going to, to the professionals, before I call for a motion, is there any other comments or anything we missed that needs to be addressed?
No, Chair, I just would recommend when you call for a motion, are you looking to also make that minor revision to number eight on page 41, where you're adding that little bit of verbiage to that?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I would just identify that in your motion, and that you also made a previous motion that has strike language on page.
Item 21.
Item 21 on page 38.
Got it. Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion, and I would ask that it would include the, item number eight, recognizing the pre-existing front yard minimum, and it would also include the previous motion to strike item 21. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we strike, strike 21 language, and that we add the language for number eight.
And that you're adopting.
And that we're.
And recommending.
Absolutely, recommending it forward.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kahoot.
Yes.
Mr. Travellion.
Yes.
Mr. Swade.
Yes.
Mayor Bruno.
Bruno.
Chairman Pesh.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, everyone. It's, I'm glad the project has come to a conclusion, and I guess we'll see everyone in 10 years. Correspondents?
No, there is no.
No. Motion to approve the minutes of August 20th, 2024.
Motion to approve the minutes of August 20th, 2024.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Kate, any reason for a closed session?
Not to see anything.
All right, thank you. Any comments from the board? This time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening.